Good evening, everyone. I welcome you to the regular city council meeting of the Richfield City Council, which is being held virtually via WebEx of January 25th, 2022. I call our meeting to order, and the first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everybody is able to unmute yourself and put your camera on, if you can, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. The next item is our open forum, so I will pass it to our executive analyst, Winn, to let people know how they can participate in the open forum.
Thank you, Mayor. We always encourage residents to partake in our open forum live during our meetings. You can do that now by calling 612-861-0651, and you can have your comments heard by council tonight. You can also email your comments ahead of time to be read by a staff member, and you can send those comments to kwynn@richfieldmn.gov. Again, if you'd like to participate now during the meeting, you can call 612-861-0651. And I currently do not have anybody on the line.
Thank you, Executive Assistant Winn. And then just to remind folks while we're waiting on a couple items. One, our open forum is an opportunity from anyone from the public to come to our city council meeting and share whatever they would like to share regarding any issue that is not, that's not on the council agenda as a public hearing. So anything on the agenda, outside of the agenda, you get up to three minutes. It's not an opportunity for discussion, it's just a time to hear from the council. We do have presentations later today, so if you're here for one of the presentations, I know we have the celebration, are celebrating Richfield Olympian John Soto Moreno, as well as the Richfield Foundation Grant Awards. So those are separate items, we will be moving to those, so anything outside of that. And then, we usually don't have this many, I don't know that we've ever had this many people on a virtual meeting, so welcome. And then, I do want to just let people know, if you could please mute yourself if you're not speaking, that helps people clearly hear us in the meeting. And then, as well, if you can turn your camera off, unless you're, until we're to the part where you are speaking or presenting for the item, that just helps people and makes it a little less confusing. But thank you so much, Executive Analyst Winn, anybody on the line for the open forum, or anybody here for the open forum?
I do not have anybody on the line, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Looks like a lot of folks are probably here for our two presentations, so we'll just wait a little bit and see if anybody would like to call in for the open forum.
We have a quick question, can finally speak here?
Yes, go ahead, you have a question?
Yeah, we don't have a camera in this computer, so it, you know, that's why you can't see us, but I'm translating for the person that is, you know, here. And he's just wondering, so we see a lot of faces, is this like one of those open forums? For people just to speak up, or what is this really?
Yep, so right now, we are in the part of the city council meeting where if someone wants to share something with the city council, they have up to three minutes to share, if they would like, on any item. So is, does the person who you're translating for, or sorry, interpreting for, would like to say something on a specific topic?
He does have something to say, but I guess I just, so that I can educate him a little more, if he shares something, how is that going to help his case?
Okay, a quick question, is this regarding any specific topic on the council agenda?
No, one second, let me just ask, okay?
Mayor, I do believe they're here for the agenda item with the alcohol failures?
Yes, alcohol failures, yes.
So then, we can discuss that during, once the agenda item comes up, then.
Okay, so when that comes up, we'll just unmute and speak about that?
Yep, we will mention the item, and then we can let you know when it's an appropriate time to speak.
Okay, yeah, got it, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'll ask one more time, Executive Assistant Winn, anybody here for the open forum?
I do not have any callers.
Okay, seeing as we have nobody here for the open forum, I will close the open forum, and I'll move to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the city council work session of January 11th, 2022, the city council meeting of January 11th, 2022, the special city council work session of January 8th, 2022, the special city council work session of January 13th, 2022, and the special city council work session of January 15th, 2022.
Councilmember Supple, I'll move approval of all those minutes.
Councilmember Whalen, I'll second.
Thank you, the motion has been made to move the minutes by Councilmember Supple, and seconded by Councilmember Whalen. And City Clerk Sinning, could you please take the roll call vote?
Yes, I certainly can, Mayor. I will have my camera off today because I am not feeling the greatest, so hopefully I don't cough during this. So, Mayor Regan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
Is Councilmember Troutman present? I cannot see if he is.
No, he is actually not present.
Okay, perfect. Cool, thank you.
Right, we have four ayes, thank you, the minutes have been approved. The next item on our council agenda, we have two items, two presentations today, tonight. The first one is the proclamation, celebrating Richfield Olympian John Soto Moreno. So I do see that John is here. Hi, John, welcome, thank you for joining us.
All right, thank you for having me.
And I'm going to share a little bit more about John, and then I also need to pull up the proclamation, so one moment, please. Second. Okay. There we go. Okay, perfect. So before I read the proclamation, I do want to share a little bit about John. I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll open it up to John, we're super thankful you're here with us tonight, and I'd love for you to say a few words if you'd like, and we just want to celebrate you here in the Richfield City Council. So, a little bit more about John, John Soto Moreno moved from Mexico to Minnesota with his family when he was seventeen years ago, and he's lived in Richfield ever since. He attended Richfield Public Schools, where he first started Nordic skiing during high school. John is, has excelled, obviously, at Nordic skiing during his time at Richfield High School, and he did great in his competitions, was respected by his teammates, and was known for his perseverance and attitude. He was interested in the technology field, and ultimately ended up graduating from Dunwoody College of Technology with a focus on systems and robotics. He has gone to excel in this field, and he's currently employed by a company based in Switzerland. John has continued Nordic skiing at a competitive level, he has been all over the world for competitions, most recently Turkey and Switzerland. His successes at these events have allowed him to qualify to represent Mexico in Nordic skiing at the 2022 Beijing Olympics. We are so excited to see him compete at the international level, and we wish him all the best of luck in the Olympics. And not only is he an accomplished Nordic skiing athlete, he's also dedicated to his family and his community, and he is, of course, an outstanding member of the Richfield community, so we want to celebrate you, John, for everything that you've done for your accomplishments, and which wish you the best of luck. And what I'll do now is I'll read the proclamation, and then I'd love to open it up to you and anyone else that's here on your behalf for the proclamation. So proclamation of the city of Richfield, whereas John Soto Moreno moved to Mexi, from Mexico to Minnesota when he was with his family seventeen years ago, and where he has been a longtime member of the Richfield community, attending Richfield Public Schools, and currently living in Richfield, and whereas fifteen years ago, John began Nordic skiing during his time at Richfield High School, and whereas during John's high school Nordic skiing career, he received all, the all-conference award, finished top fifteen as sections, and received the Workhorse Award from his Richfield High School teammates. And whereas after high school, John enrolled at Dunwoody College of Technology, where he graduated with a degree in systems and robotics, and is currently a project manager in that field. And whereas John's competitiveness in the World Cup circuit of Nordic skiing has allowed him to race in places like Cameroon, Canada, Oberstorf, Germany, and Seefeld, Austria. And whereas John achieved qualifications for the 2022 Beijing Olympics at the Nordic Ski World Championship in Germany, and whereas being a dual citizen, John has been selected to represent Mexico in the 2022 Beijing Olympics. And whereas John's hard work, dedication, and perseverance is commendable, and has brought pride to our city and nation. And whereas Richfield, the Richfield community celebrates his achievements in Nordic skiing and wishes him success in the 2022 Beijing Olympics. And whereas Richfield community also celebrates John for the person he is today and the person he will become in the future. Now, therefore, I, Maria Regan Gonzalez, the mayor of Richfield, do proclaim that the city of Richfield, Minnesota, and its citizens recognize and celebrate that John Soto Moreno is hereby extended our support for his accomplishments, proclaimed this 25th day of January, 2022. So that is the proclamation, you'll receive a formal copy of that, John, after I sign it, but I just wanted to thank you for being here and open it up to you. If there's anything you'd like to say, our community is very proud of you.
No, thank you for having me, and yeah, it's been a pleasure I've had, and keep receiving the support from the community, which is pretty exciting, so, you know, I don't know if, you guys know, I had a fundraiser event organized by, by the community, close friends of mine since high school, and it was, it was overwhelming to have everyone here, and you know, I was told that there were a lot of cars, you know, around the area that people were having issues parking, so that was exciting. And friends of friends in the community here in Richfield, and everyone has been supportive. And, you know, that I've told my friends that, and I'm not only representing Mexico and the state, but I'm also representing my community here in Richfield, which also means a lot to me, so it's also another addition, you know, that when you guys, or if you guys were to see me there, you know, that I'm also representing Richfield, and it has been part of my life and has built me to the man, to the person, citizen that I am today as well. So it means, it means a lot to be here with you, with you guys as well, so.
Thank you so much, John, and I just wanted to ask, sometimes we have folks, other folks here for the presentation, is there anyone else here from your family for this council presentation, by chance?
I don't think so, it was, yeah.
Well, thank you so much, John, and I want to open it up to our council members, anything you'd like to say to John? Councilmember Supple, and then Councilmember Whalen.
First of all, I just want to say we are so very, very proud of you and all your accomplishments, and I'm sure that your family and friends and coaches and teachers and everyone join me in wishing you well. And I was fortunate to be able to get to know your family through the Richfield Public Schools, and I just am so very proud of you, so thank you so much for all you're doing to represent us, and best wishes.
Yeah, thank you very much, thank you.
Yes, I would, I would echo that, and I was going to ask, if you, well, first, which, which events, or event or events you're in, so we can keep an eye out for it, and if you know which day those are going to be happening on, I would love to know that, so we can watch.
Yeah, I'll be doing the fifteen kilometer race, classic style, which is on, on February 11th, when it happens, I don't remember the time, but I think it's around two or three in the morning, Richfield time, I just think of an idea. So that's the only race that I'll be doing, that I qualified for. But if there's a chance to do another one, for some reason over there, I will let you guys know.
No, that's awesome, and I, I think in, in non-COVID times, I'm sure there'd be a large watch party somewhere in town, but we will cheer from our own living rooms and wish you the best in that.
Perfect, yeah, thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Um, yeah, I'll just say congratulations, and do Richfield proud, good job, and I'll, I'll keep my eyes, keep my eyes peeled for your event.
Yeah, perfect, thank you very much, means a lot.
Congratulations, John, and I just wanted to ask, are folks, are folks still doing the bake sale for you?
Uh, yes.
Going on, okay.
Yeah, I think it's until end of this week, and pretty much my friends are the ones doing all the baking, and yeah, the funds go to my ski fund, pretty much, you know, to help pay for all this journey.
So folks have one more week left, you can find information, I know it's all over Facebook on the Richfield Community page, you can probably search John's name, but there is a baked good fundraiser, and also GoFundMe, and if you could please support it and share it with your friends, I know our family's getting in order of baked goods this weekend too, so we're super excited, we're very proud of you, John, we would love to have you at the Woodlake Nature Center sometime and do a bilingual ski with me, we just had one a few weeks ago, and it was really fun, but we'd love to have you do an event with us. I think so many community members would come to ski with you at Woodlake, if, if we would be honored to have your presence there sometime in the future.
Yeah, definitely, I saw those pictures that you guys posted, and he, he got my interest, so yeah, I would definitely be, I'll do that, so.
Felicidades, John, buena suerte, and we are so proud of you.
Thank you, guys, thank you for having me.
The next item is another presentation, we have one more left before we go to the rest of our council agenda, and it is the Richfield Foundation 2022 Grant Award Presentation, and I do see Scott here from the foundation, I'm not sure who from the foundation I should pass it to, though, to kick us off, or any, see, Who's Nia, too?
Yes, um, so I will be giving the presentation, hello, my name is Dan Bradley, I'm the president or chair of the Richfield Foundation this year, and Chris, I think, is, yeah, he's going through the hard point. So this is for the Richfield Foundation, this, it's like our theme, successful kids, secure families, and strong community. On the next few, the next slide, this just shows kind of like a graph of our growth in grant making over the last few years. Richfield Foundation receives like money and donations from the community and throughout the state, and then we're able to give out grants once a year, and for the last couple of years, we've had two different time periods where we've given out grants. So we have the annual grants at the top in 2021, the Richfield Foundation granted out $24,814 to fourteen organizations, and the cumulative total since 1990 is $354,234 to the foundation history, and that kind of shows the graph of the growth that we've gone through. For 2021, it was a lower amount than 2020 because of, we, in 2020, there were more money granted to the Richfield Foundation, I think one came either from the state or through the Minneapolis Foundation, that we were able to hand out to the community through another grant process. Next slide, these are the board members of the Richfield Foundation, so myself as the chair, and then we have a couple of, like, the vice chair is Lindsay Cry, and then we also have a couple of co-chairs of different events, so like, for Kate, and then we have David, Kristen, Chris, Alex is our secretary, Claire is the co-chair of the event, which is mostly the wine event that we've held yearly, Laney, Julie, and a couple of the people are online today, Laura, Scott, as was mentioned by Maria, Debbie Gutell, Rhoda, Jeremy, Maria, Susan, Liz, and Joanna, that's the treasurer. Next slide, so for our annual fundraiser in 2021, we did not hold one due to COVID, but we did have a giving gratitude session that was mostly on Facebook and encouraging people online to give, especially during the give to the max period. So during that week of thought and inspiration, there were a couple of, all, all week long, we had different posts on giving people, inspiring people to give to the organization, and we raised about $2,000, next slide. For the 2021 grants, we went through this process of scoring each, I guess, grant applicant, and not all the applicants we were able to give an amount to, especially since we have not been, you know, raising any money due to COVID as much, because we were not able to have our fundraiser, but these are some of the recipients, so we had the Richfield Dual Language, $500, and it was for the Media Center Items and Book Fending Machine, the Richfield Senior Party, $500 scholarships to attend the party and party supplies and materials. And looks like Summit Music, $500, travel around nursing homes and facilities to provide music, and that was definitely, a lot of people appreciated that, especially on 66th Street, there's a couple of homes where that benefited from someone playing music outside during the COVID times. Next slide. We gave to Ion, Ian, I think Ion, $2,000, support for residents living in Seasons Park, and they've used those funds, they said right now that they're making kind of like a community area and creating that in the middle of Seasons Park for people can, like, barbecue on the outside, and then also gather with their family and things like that, so it's getting into, or going to good use. Then we have Assistance League, $2,000, clothes for kids, our school reads program, Links to Learning and Smart Start programs, and then for Cornerstone, $1,314, shelter upgrades for children and infants. Next slide. Loaves and Fishes, we gave $2,000 to for the handout free nutritious meals at two locations in Richfield. The Meals on Wheels Program, $1,000, frozen meals safe for pandemic deliveries. Partnership Academy, $1,500, an engagement motivation program for distance learning students. People with Capes, $2,000, emergency basic needs expenses for participants. Next slide. For the Richfield Basketball Association, $1,000, they had a variety of needs of the association, including scholarships for those in need, advertising, and hosting a tournament. The Richfield Middle, Middle School for $2,000, they'll apply towards the purchase of a musical instrument, the tuba for the students, the senior community services for $2,000, in-home chore and maintenance services for low-income seniors, tapestry for $2,000 assisting with childcare, food, and transportation costs, next slide. And Crossroads Panorama, we gave them a scholarship this year, $500, for their Scrogetta program and play, so in all, like, we gave the bulk in grants, but then for this one, we had to give them a scholarship due to the special circumstances of the application period. And I think that's all, is there another slide? Okay, great, so that's just the presentation from the Richfield Foundation, just wanted to update the Richfield City Council on our activities for 2021. Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much, Chair Dan Bradley. Any comments, questions from the council members on the awesome work that our Richfield Foundation is doing to support community organizations? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, and Councilmember Supple?
Certainly a great list of recipients, the only, the only question I was going to ask, which obviously I'm sure you don't have an answer to, is, will you have the wine fundraiser this year? Because I noticed such a treasured community event, so I assume it depends on what happens, but if you have anything to say about that, I'm all ears.
Yes, we are in the process of planning how to move forward on, with that. There, they were planning to have one in February, but with Omnicron and everything going on, like, it might have to, like, we're definitely discussing to push it to where it can be held outside, but there's a lot of talks going on, kind of like what's feasible in moving forward with that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Supple?
I just wanted to extend a heartfelt thank you to all of the volunteers that are working on the foundation and all the support that they're giving to our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Whalen?
Yeah, just a quick thank you to the, the foundation, to all of these organizations that are doing great work and wanting to keep adding more projects and initiatives that you're, you're helping to fund. So thanks, everyone, and just would encourage the broader community to keep supporting, donating as you're able to the, the Richfield Foundation.
Thank you, and I'll just double down on the accolades for the Richfield Foundation, for the community leaders, the awesome work that they're doing. When people ask me, where can I donate, where can I volunteer in Richfield, I send people to the Richfield Foundation because I feel like it's the one-stop shop for all things Richfield. If you want to know who are the organizations doing good in our city and all the different ways that they're contributing, and, and who those players are, it's the Richfield Foundation. So thank you, Who's Nia, for your leadership on the foundation, thank you to all the community organizations that you're supporting, and hopefully we can do something in person, maybe in the summer, to continue to fundraise for the foundation. So thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, we have concluded our presentations, the next item is the approval of the agenda.
Councilmember Whalen, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Hayford O'Leary, second.
The motion has been made to approve the agenda by Councilmember Whalen, and seconded by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Any comments or questions on the agenda from council? All right, City Clerk Sinning, if you could please take the roll call vote.
Mayor Regan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
Thank you, we have four ayes, and the agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent calendar with City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. And on tonight's consent calendar, we only have two items. Item A, consider approval of de minimis determination for the Hennepin County Road Project at the southwest corner of the intersection of Seventieth Street and Nicolet Avenue, that will improve both the accessibility and safety of the area adjacent to Augsburg Park. Item B, consider the approval of change order number seven for the Seventy-seventh Street Underpass Project. And I submit both of these items for your consideration as part of the consent agenda.
Councilmember Whalen, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Consent calendar motion has been made for approval by Councilmember Whalen, and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Any comments or questions from council? I'll just add one, I don't know if item A is related to the complaints that we've received in past years on the intersection and crossing over to Augsburg Park from Nicolet, from ARDAP, or some community members with disabilities, do you happen to know City Manager Rodriguez or any staff?
I don't know the details, Mayor, but I do know that our staff are pleased with the project and believe that it's going to improve safety.
I don't know the details, Mayor, but I do know that our staff are pleased with the project and believe that it's going to improve safety.
And I know Director Markle, did you raise your hand to say something? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna add, you know, there's a couple of components to the project. One is definitely upgrading the traffic signals. And the second is improving pedestrian access in that intersection. So it will have an improved crosswalk that will be beneficial to accessibility community that will have an audible countdown. It also will have improved signals for traffic, which will include the yellow blinking lights and have improved like a left turn lane there. So it's a little safer the way it's designed.
Great. Thank you for that additional detail. And thank you for, I know that we have had continuous kind of comments on this, this area over the years by some of our residents. So hopefully some of this work will help in improving that. I know it's a beloved park and there are all different ways that people are getting to it and that there has been accessibility issues in the past. So very exciting. Other comments in the consent calendar? Okay, is City Clerk Sinning, if you could please take the roll call vote?
Sorry. Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen.
Aye.
Thank you. We have four votes and the consent calendar is approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. This item is a violation hearing and consideration of a resolution regarding civil enforcement for establishments that recently underwent, under, excuse me, underwent alcohol compliance checks conducted by Richfield Public Safety Staff and failed by selling alcohol to a person under the age of 21. Alcohol compliance checks were conducted by the Richfield Public Safety Staff on November 3rd and November 9th of 2021. Compliance checks are done to determine the availability of alcohol to people under 21 and meet state statutes. There are currently 33 establishments in Richfield that hold licenses to sell alcohol. Compliance checks were conducted at 31 establishments. Two establishments were closed at the time the checks were conducted. 10 of the 31 establishments sold alcohol to an underage person. The action being taken today is for civil enforcement and the penalties against these establishments. It is a first-time offense for the following three establishments. Basal Petroleum LLC doing business as Winter Gas Pump and Munch located at 7733 Portland Avenue South. Lindale Smokehouse LLC doing business as Lindale Smokehouse located at 7745 Lindale Avenue South. Los Sanchez Taqueria 2 LLC doing business as Los Sanchez Taqueria located at 262 66th Street West. The remaining seven establishments have failed two or more alcohol compliance checks in the past. Due to the step back, step back option in Resolution Number 9511, an establishment can step back after two consecutive compliance checks. The following establishments have been stepped back to a first-time offense. Devani's Incorporated doing business as Devani's Pizza and Hot Hoys located at 6345 Penn Avenue South. Fred Babcock VFW Post 5555 located at 6715 Lake Shore Drive. My Burger Operations LLC doing business as My Burger located at 6555 Lindale Avenue South. Northern Tier Retail LLC doing business as Speedway Number 4195 located at 7500 Lindale Avenue South. Patrick's French Bakery Incorporated doing businesses as Patrick's Bakery and Cafe located at 2928 66th Street West. Sri Hari Corporation doing business as Portland Food Mart located at 7701 Portland Avenue South. VPC Richfield Pizza LLC doing business as Giordano's of Richfield located at 3066th Street West. Establishments will be given an opportunity to admit they made an unlawful sale to an underage person and agree to the penalties imposed by the city council, or deny the allegations and request a contested case hearing. The city council will adopt a resolution imposing the penalties for establishment, establishments that admit to the violation. If the allegation is denied and a contested case hearing is requested, the city council will refer the matter to an independent hearing examiner. Establishments will be notified of the hearing date and given the opportunity to present evidence and rebut the city's evidence at the hearing. For first-time violators, Public Safety recommends the city council follow the guidelines set forth in Resolution 9511. One, suspend their license to sell alcohol for five days. Two, pay a $1,000 civil fine. Three, meet with the Director of Public Safety to present a written action plan to ensure future compliance. And four, require a manager to attend an alcohol compliance training and awareness presentation with cost paid by the establishment. The training must be conducted by a private firm and approved by Public Safety. Did staff want to add anything to that?
Councilmember Supple, Madam Mayor, I'll I'll turn it over to Support Services Manager. I was just gonna turn it over to Support Services Manager Jennifer Anderson to make a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. This is an annual compliance check that is completed at all of our liquor establishments. We had 10 failures. Typically, after this evening, each establishment would receive a letter from the city outlining the required steps, which Councilmember Supple just spoke about, the suspension of their license for five days, the $1,000 civil fine, meeting with Chief Enthorn, presenting a written plan to ensure that future compliance is met, and the completion of a alcohol compliance training by their manager. As, as was stated by Councilmember Supple, this was the first offense for everybody. There have been, excuse me, several organizations that have failed in the past, but they've had successful compliance checks in between that have allowed them to step back. And that step back option is outlined in Resolution 9511. So we did not hear from any of the organizations that they were going to contest this. They certainly can, if they feel, share what happened. But the city will be moving forward tomorrow with sending out those letters to those establishments. And I will be tracking the completion of the necessary next steps. And we hope to have successful compliance checks in 2022.
Thank you, Public Health Administrator Anderson. And I just have a couple of questions for clarification for the council, for myself, because I know these don't come around on our agenda frequently. And then I know we did have a question in terms of kind of repercussions or impact from one of the business owners who was here tonight. So just to clarify and to remind folks, it says violation hearing, but the item itself on the council agenda is not a public hearing. So it's not an opportunity for folks to explain or contest right now during this item. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so the item that we have before us, essentially what it is, is just outlining kind of the results of those checks. And then the request to the council is to review the guidelines and then say, yep, these are the guidelines, which are the guidelines that we put in place every year. And then you're informing us and the business owners who are here of the next steps, which is they'll get a letter from you outlining kind of their options to contest or to admit the wrongdoing. And then there's the, the accompanying kind of repercussions for that. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so if folks do have questions that are specific questions to their establishment, to the violation themselves, you will be getting a letter from our city staff. You'll have an opportunity to ask questions directly to our staff about your establishment and kind of what's next. But I just wanted to make that clarification for the council, for the public. And then also, I know we have several of the establishment folks here. Are there any other comments or questions from the council members? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. So I'm just to clarify, just because the resolution language, and I apologize if the mayor asks us in different terms and is not quite getting it. It says in the resolution that they appear before the council on, sorry, where am I seeing this? On January 25th today, and stipulated to the penalty imposed by this resolution. Does that mean that all that, all 10 of these are on this call and are going to say, we did this, or will you intend to dispute this?
The resolution requires that, that everybody who failed a compliance check appear before the council. In the initial letter that they received, they're given an option to contest. If they're going to argue against the compliance failure, we did not hear from any of them. So what's expected is, at this point, that they would complete the items that I talked about, the suspension, the fine, meeting with Chief Enthorn, and the alcohol compliance check. And that would need to be completed by February 28th.
And then, oh, sorry, go ahead, council.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What does, what does appear mean? If they, if they're not on this call, how did they appear before us?
They are all on the call this evening.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That was the clarification I wanted. And then I was also just curious, given, given COVID and the strain on restaurants, is this the same thing we do every year? Have we reduced fines or anything? Just, I mean, both the fine and, and the five-year loss of, or five-day loss of revenue and additional training and lost time worries me just a little bit. I understand that people need to be held accountable, but just given the situation. But it's all business in restaurants. It's just a little worrisome.
These are the same stipulations that are given every year for violating state law in selling alcohol to a minor.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Supple, and then Councilmember Whalen.
So I'm going by my memories. I might be wrong, but is this more than we usually have when we do compliance checks? I don't remember having more than one or two businesses.
This is many more than what we normally have. We do alcohol and tobacco compliance checks, and we're seeing a significant increase in violations with both. So yes, this is, this is much more than what we've seen in the past couple of years.
Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. I was, I was gonna make a similar comment and, and trust that staff, as they work with businesses, as they get the written plans, that, that you will determine if there's trends or things that need to be addressed. And certainly if there's any, anything at the policy level that might need to be shifted, let, let us know. But my, my guess is that it is largely because of many restaurants and, and businesses experiencing a lot of staff turnover and just stress and that there's a lot happening. But I, I do think it's still really important that we, we hold businesses accountable, that we, I, I don't know if Councilmember Hayford O'Leary was implying a, a desire to change these. I don't, I don't know that that would be appropriate, in my opinion. But I, I would, I guess if, if staff has any thoughts now or as they continue working with businesses on how to ensure more compliance going forward, in any way, we could support that. I would, I would be happy to do that.
Councilmember Supple.
Just to make sure I understood the questions you were asking before, is the next thing that I would make the motion? And, and since no one is contesting, there won't actually be anyone, like we won't actually have a hearing? Or what, how do I move forward here?
I would move to approve the, the, the resolutions that were attached to the staff report regarding the civil enforcement for establishments that failed alcohol compliance checks. And then that letter will go out from my staff tomorrow to each establishment outlining what they need to do before the end of February. And that will have my contact information on the letter. They will contact me, set up their meeting. At that time, they'll pay their fine. They need to come in with a written plan on how they're going to tweak their operations to ensure this doesn't happen again. And then I've got a couple of options for them to complete the alcohol compliance checks by the end of the month for their alcohol compliance training, excuse me.
Go ahead, Councilmember Supple.
Then I'll move to approve the attached resolutions regarding civil enforcement for establishments that failed alcohol compliance checks by selling alcohol to an underage person.
Excuse me? Can, can, can I speak here very quick?
Uh, yes, very briefly.
Yeah, so we were under the impression that this meeting was for you guys to, maybe for us to contest, as I think Sean was saying. And so we were under that same impression. So this is technically for us to just be present and just accept, right? Accept the resolution and then just go with Jennifer later and then talk to her, pay the fine and things like that, right?
Public Health Administrator Anderson, so if they do want to contest, is during this item right now on the council agenda, do they have to say they want to contest right now? Or do they have the opportunity to do that with you after this meeting as well? How does that part work?
Yes, exactly.
In the initial letter that they got, they were given the opportunity to contest and let us know that so that then we would have set up a hearing with a hearing judge to take place at a later date. None of them did that. You know, if, if they want to explain what happened, that's fine. But under, we would be moving forward with the guidelines that we've outlined already.
So my, the person here is saying that they were in touch with someone here from the letter. This is the only letter they got and they told them that, because they wanted to see if they could appeal or, you know, and they told them that, no, that this is the only hearing they need to be present in. And this is the opportunity they would have to kind of contest or appeal. So they, they, they tried contacting and, and that's what they were given.
Thank you. And then I'll just pass it to staff. So it sounds like we have at least one business, and I don't know if we have others who are interested in contesting, and they're here. So, and I, I see another business owner raising his hand. So I guess I'll just, I see you have your hand raised. Would you like to say something? Go ahead, I think Patrick.
Yes. I, I will not, I would not like to contest it, Mayor. I would like to explain what happened. You know, we did have an employee ask for the ID at that time, and she just didn't make the math correctly. Like someone saying, your meeting is very hard right now under COVID-19 to have employees come to work. And we experimented a very low number of sales due to the variant. So it's very challenging for business not only to stay open, to also have employees come to work and have them trained properly. So for my case, she did ask for the ID. She had the ID in her hands. She just didn't make the math correctly. And we have a procedure in the company where you cannot sell alcohol until you answer some question on the POS system. So you have to say, did you check ID? Then you go to the wine menu. You cannot do it before that. So for us, we feel a little bit victim of the situation because we are like, we have all the precaution, we do. But employee, you know, sometimes they come to work, sometimes they come, they don't come to work under this variant. They are sick. We need to send them home. We need to quarantine them. It's very stressful times right now to have that on top of it when we're doing the right thing. But we don't know what else to do than that. You know, she did ask the ID. She did have the ID on her hands. She just didn't make the math correctly. And when I confront her, she said, I'm tired, I'm stressed, I don't feel good. I didn't fire her. Some other employee doing that. I didn't do that. I sit down with her and I explain everything. So for us, we are feel like we are more the victim than anything else.
Thank you, Patrick. I'm just gonna stop for one second. I want to make, get a little bit more clear understanding on what, I don't, I want, I don't want to open this, since it's not a public hearing for this item. I want to make sure that our businesses clearly understand, looks like there's one that would like to discuss an explanation. There's one that is interested in contesting. I wanted to go back to staff and understand, it sounds like whether there's confusion or continued conversation. or continued conversation, you know, and possibly an appeal or request to contest. Is that an opportunity for them to do that? And how does, how do they follow up for each of their situations with staff?
If, if, we can certainly contact Los Sanchez. I know we worked with our CSO to communicate several different times to make sure that this meeting was understood to be attended. You know, for those that wanted to share their experience, I think that's, that's an opportunity to do so tonight. Underage 21 IDs are vertical and not horizontal, so it should be fairly easy to understand that they are selling to a minor. So we can, my staff can follow up with those two businesses.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
And first off, I appreciate Ms. Anderson, how responsive you're being to these questions, because I just couldn't have anticipated them until I heard some of these things. The question I had just about was about those IDs after what we heard from Mr. Renee about, are they, are they using like standard driver's licenses? Or are they coming with like a passport or something that would be more ambiguous?
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, I'll answer this question. They're, they're assisted by an undercover police officer. The ID that they use is a Minnesota State driver's license under the age of 21. As Jennifer talked about, it is vertical. It does say underage 21. There should not have to be any calculation done with the math. We check those driver's licenses, we take pictures of them before they go out and do any compliance checks whatsoever. I reviewed all the reports to make sure that everything was done correctly, per our protocol on compliance checks, and it was done. And I did look at the ID that was associated with the report. So those Minnesota State IDs are the newer ones, not the older ones, and did have the under 21 sticker applied at the vertical photo.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. I'm glad that you, you've already looked out for those things. I guess I'm just wondering, process-wise, would we, would we exclude the resolution for Los Sanchez or change the motion if they do not agree to this at this point? I don't know if it's a question for Ms. Anderson or the city attorney?
No, I mean, if they're gonna contest, then we would set up a public hearing and have a hearing officer that we would need to hire and come in and listen to their, their case. We worked very diligently with our Spanish-speaking CSO to communicate with the owner several times, to make sure he understood he needed to be present tonight, that he has a WebEx address, and that he would have a translator with him. And, and we're happy to work with him, if that's what he wishes.
Sorry, yeah, so he, he's really not wanting to contest, like, he's admitting to, to the event. He's just kind of wanting to talk about the resolution and maybe, you know, just kind of discuss that a little further, but he's admitting to the events.
Okay. So, so in that case, I can, we can touch base with him and have our, our CSO communicate with myself on a phone call or an in-person visit to talk more about that.
Yes, that would be.
We're happy to do that.
That would be great. And so, just so that I let him know, would you reach out like this week? Or should, should we call the number here on the letter?
Yep, we can reach out tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, sounds good, thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Councilmember Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I believe this is maybe an area of some amount of council discretion in terms of how much more we hear or don't hear from businesses who are not intending to contest but want to share. And I, I guess it, to me, it sounds like there is that opportunity built into the process to follow up with staff. But I, I guess I would ask the rest of council if you would like to hear more from businesses. I'd be open to that, but would, I think we should establish that process rather than having people jumping in.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. At this point, I know we do have two businesses that did share, and I would want to hear if there was others who would want to share as well, just so that it was a fair opportunity for everybody. And if this is a time normally for folks to share, then I would like that to be clearly articulated in the process as well. So I'm open to it. I don't know where other staff, council members are. I see a yes from Councilmember Supple and a yes from Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, and we have Councilmember Whelan. So I will open it up to folks, and if you could please keep your comments brief, that would be greatly appreciated. I will pass it to Jeff. I saw Jeff with his hand up.
Mayor and City Council, how are you guys doing tonight? We did, we did not pass, and I was just wondering if I could set up an appointment to meet with the bartender that got, got violated, I should say, or, what's the word I'm looking for, that got stung? And he's not here right now, and I was just wondering if I could set up a meeting so he can explain his side?
Hi, Jeff, and what restaurant are you representing?
I'm, I'm the general manager at the Fred Babac, the VFW, host for 5555.
Thank you. And is that request you have with city staff?
Uh, not yet. I just, see, it happened, I just took over the general manager here two weeks ago, so I'm just kind of new to this.
Yep, and so it's.
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Yep, go ahead, Jennifer, go ahead.
If, if I can just, just explain, every establishment that failed this evening will get a letter, and they will be required to have their license suspended, pay the fine, and meet with Chief Hemthorne and myself. And so you'll be contacting me to set up an appointment. You can explain what happened. We're more than happy to, to listen to that and then complete the alcohol sales manager training. So everybody that failed tonight will have an opportunity to meet with the chief and myself, share what happened. We want to know what your plan is to make sure this doesn't happen again. We don't want to see you again, quite honestly. We hope you have a successful compliance check in 2022. So we're, yeah, I mean, that's part of the process, and we're happy to, to, to hear your, your side of the story when you meet with us.
All right, I appreciate this so much, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Jennifer. Any other comments or questions from business owners that are here tonight? All right, it sounds like we don't have any other comments or questions. Thank you to our staff for explaining and for folks for speaking up. So it sounds, okay, Councilmember Supple, you made the motion, is that correct? And was it seconded? Sorry, it was a little bit ago.
No, it, it wasn't, and I'm just checking, since no one is contesting, I think the motion is still appropriate, so.
Councilmember Whelan, I would second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Whelan. Any additional comments or questions from council members? Okay, City Clerk Sinning, if you could please take the roll call vote.
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Whelan?
Aye.
Thank you. We have four ayes and the resolution passes. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. And as Jennifer said, you will be getting the letter, and then you will be asked to set up follow-up appointments, so you can connect with the chief and Jennifer. Thank you for showing up tonight, and stay warm. Thanks. All right, the next item I have, and that is the consideration of the appointments to the city, city advisory board and commissions, advisory board and commissions. Let's see here. The terms of several city advisory board and commission members expired on January 31st, 2022. In addition, due to resignations, there are midterm vacancies that should be filled. Term of advisory board and commissions are for three years. Please refer to the attached list of appointments for reference. The city council directs the city manager's office to conduct an annual recruitment seeking applicants to fill the vacancies, and this recruitment includes a press release and information of the city website and social media platforms. Applicants were interviewed at the work session held on January 8th and January 13th and January 15th of 2022. To ensure a quorum at future advisory board and commission meetings, the city council should make appointments at the January 25th, 2022 city council meeting. So I will just read the appointments that we have and just give a huge thank you to our city staff who put together, who work together every single year to put this together, to Chris, to Kelly, to our communications staff, to all of our staff that are leading the boards and commissions who are publicizing and promoting it. So we have great Richfield leaders that apply every single year. It's actually one of my favorite things to do every single year is interviews, because we meet a large amount of people in our community, we hear their stories, we hear why they want to get involved in our Richfield boards and commissions. So the appointments for the advisory board of health, and I'm not gonna read, if it's a midterm referral, they can see each of the commissioners are getting contacted directly, but I'll just read who we are appointing. So the advisory board of health appointments are Justin Evidon, Evdon, Rebecca Case, and Edwina Garcia. For the arts commission, it's Paul Hui, Eric Burnak, and Stephanie Jacobson. The civil service commission is Jeffrey Bruzek. I'm sorry for mispronouncing several of the names. Our community service commission appointments are Ben Marks, Jessica Johnson Creps, Michael Devane, Kevin Went, and Tessa Johnson. Our human rights commission appointments are Tim Garvey and Adrian Lee. Our planning commission appointments are Gordon Hanson and Eddie Johnson and Ben Sirma. The sustainability commission appointments are Adam Burnside, Craig Heinan, Amy Utley, Satwana Degupta, and Logan Teen. And then the transportation commission appointments are Husnia Bradley, Louis Dirzak, and Jim Mahoney. So I will make the motion. Well, I guess I'll go to city staff. Is there any additional comments from city staff?
Thank you, Mayor. No, those are the people that we've appointed or that you've chosen to appoint to commissions. And we look forward to having them on board for hopefully, you know, one to three years. And we will be, just to put it out there, we will be opening up a recruitment in the next month or two here for HRA EDA spots. So if anybody is looking to become part of the Housing Redevelopment Authority, just keep an eye out, that we will be doing a recruitment for that soon.
Thank you, Kelly. And I'll make the motion to appoint the members that I just listed to fill the expiring or vacant terms on city advisory board and commissions referenced in the attached list.
Hayford O'Leary, second.
All right, I've made the motion, and Councilmember Hayford O'Leary has made the second. And are there comments or questions from council? Councilmember Whelan.
Just a brief, again, thank you to everyone who applied, who interviewed, and we're excited to, to work with you all and see what you bring to the work of our city together.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Supple.
I would agree with what you guys have all been saying. It is the most fun part of the year when you do those interviews and get to meet all the people that are excited about working for the city. So thank you to everyone who volunteered.
Great, any other comments or questions? Okay.
Saving mine for hometown hits.
Okay. City Clerk Sinning, if you could take the roll call vote.
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Whelan?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We've made our appointments, and congratulations to everyone, and thank you for joining our boards and commissions. The next item I also have, which is the city council liaison, so the consideration of representatives to serve as the 2022 liaisons at various local, regional, and state organizations and city boards and commissions. So members of the city council serve as the city's representatives on various local, regional, and state organizations and city boards and commissions. Each year, the city council appoints these representatives. So I just will read through the list of, and I'll just read the council appointments for liaison appointments for 2022. So metro cities and legal Minnesota cities, all council members are asked to participate if and when they're able to. The noise oversight committee, we have Ben, Councilmember Ben Whelan as the alternate, and we have a staff person as the liaison. 35W Solutions Alliance, we have Councilmember Hayford O'Leary as the representative and the mayor as the alternate. 494 Commission, corridor commission, we have Councilmember Supple as the representative. The alternate is Councilmember Troutman. Richfield School District, the mayor is the liaison, and Councilmember Supple is the alternate. The Friends of Wood Lake Board, we have Councilmember Troutman as the liaison and Councilmember Whelan is the alternate. The Southwest Cable Commission, we have the mayor as the representative, and then Councilmember Hayford O'Leary is the alternate. The Richfield Community Human Services Planning Council, we have Councilmember Whelan as the representative, and Councilmember Supple as the alternate. The advisory board of health, we have the mayor as the liaison and Councilmember Supple as the alternate. The arts commission, we have Councilmember Supple as the liaison and Councilmember Troutman as the alternate. The civil service commission, we have Councilmember Troutman as the liaison. And the community services commission, we have Councilmember Whelan as the liaison and Councilmember Supple as the alternate. Friendship City Commission, we have Councilmember Supple as the liaison and Councilmember Troutman as the alternate. The Human Rights Commission, we have Councilmember Troutman as the liaison and Councilmember Hayford O'Leary as the alternate. The Planning Commission, we have the mayor and, as the liaison and Councilmember Troutman as the alternate. The Transportation Commission, we have Councilmember Hayford O'Leary as the liaison and Councilmember Troutman as the alternate. The Richfield Historical Society has Councilmember Supple as the representative and Councilmember Whelan as the alternate. Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Committee is the mayor, with the alternate being Councilmember Troutman. And the Sustainability Commission, we have Councilmember Whelan as the liaison and Councilmember Troutman as the alternate. So in addition to all of our meetings, we represent and our liaisons to several other meetings as well, whether it is statewide, representing the city regionally, or connecting the work of our, you know, of our city council to our commissions. So any comments or questions from, clarifications needed from council members on the item? Okay, I will make the motion to appoint, oh, sorry, I have the wrong one here. I'll make the motion to designate the city council liaison appointments to various local, regional, and state organizations and city boards and commissions.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by the mayor and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Comments or questions from the council members? Great, City Clerk Sinning, if you could please take the roll call vote.
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Whelan?
Aye.
Thank you. We have four ayes and the motion passes. The next item is the city manager's report with City Manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, all I have is a, a report on COVID, an update, and I've asked Administrator Anderson to provide the report, and then I have a little bit more information.
Thank you, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez and council members. If you've been following the news, I'm sure that you know that COVID data has been kind of messy over the last 10 days with Martin Luther King holiday and the recently discovered IT glitch at MDH that created a backlog of unreported cases. So from early January until about January 17th, there were over 45,000 positive cases that went undetected in MDH's reporting system. So you've got a, an already overwhelmed data tracking system. You've got more than 500 vacancies within MDH. They have struggled to keep up with report processing. So after realizing the backlog, the financial and staff realities, the surge in at-home testing, which we don't have the ability to track, the lag in test results due to surges in community testing at our sites. in community testing at our sites, data reporting is going to change at MDH in the coming weeks. And you'll see that if you log on to the MDH situation page that provides the daily updates on numbers, deaths, and so forth. They're going to be changing how that, how that information is reported. Because of all this, we should be seeing more reliable data coming out next week. And I, I'm kind of nervous to say that, but I'm, I'm, early indications report that numbers are trending downwards, and I don't want to say that too loudly, but we'll be watching the data very carefully. We're thinking, and what we're seeing is that we should be peaking in the next seven to ten days. And after watching data in South Africa and the UK, the decline in cases was really rapid, and so that's what we are watching for. If you were following social media this week, Richfield recently received two hundred and fifty-five at-home Rapid Test Kits. They're QuickView Rapid Test Kits. These were a one-time allocation from MDH to local public health departments across the state. We gave our test kits to our Kids at Home Program participants, which there are about a hundred. And then we, we selected a townhome condominium property in the city that has a large Somali population. Those kits were distributed earlier this week. They were given an educational fact sheet on how to use the test kit, and were intended for populations that were struggling to secure testing for themselves and their families. We've also talked about a federal allocation of masks, and a lot of that progress was made today on phone calls with Wilmington New Dyna. The city will be receiving approximately fifteen thousand and ninety-five masks from the federal government. They're intended for those who are experiencing barriers to finding a good quality mask, as well as to be distributed to the general population. Masks should be received tomorrow at Wilmington Public Health. They need to break all of those down into the allocated allotments for each city. Our staff will be picking them up next week. They will be distributed to, each, each of the three cities gave an allotment to Veep. In Richfield specifically, Lared, faith organizations, food establishments, and childcare centers will be receiving masks. We will also have them available at the Richfield Community Center, Woodlake Nature Center. We're looking at large apartment complexes. And they will also receive instructions on how to use those masks and care for them in between uses. It's recommended that they can be used five times, and then there will be instructions on how to dry the masks, keep them in between uses, and, and then they'll be disposed of. Additionally, the federal government announced that there will be four hundred million and ninety-five masks available via the Strategic National Stockpile, and those will be made available to the public through community health centers and pharmacies early, we're thinking the first week of February. Each American will be allotted three masks, and they are adult masks. High-quality masks for children will be released soon. There's any additional information on that for children. Again, this won't be a perfect process. We know that people may jump from pharmacy to pharmacy collecting masks, but they will be available, and that's the information that we have today. So if there's any questions, you know, I know that people are very curious about data. We hope to have more reliable data next week after this backlog is, is counted, after communities are provided their, their positive case numbers. So that's kind of where we're at today.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Supple?
There were some media reports that through the Met Council wastewater treatment, they could monitor levels of COVID, and it seemed to match the MDH data. Do we look at any of that, or is that just something that the, that the MDH is looking at?
That's something that MDH is using. Just to kind of compare with the data that they're getting, it's not something that's relied upon on a regular basis. It's just something to compare, to compare at this point. And, and yes, it, what we're seeing is that the results of that wastewater treatment sampling, and, and keep in mind that when you have positive cases, you're going to have positive cases, and then you're going to have people showing up in the hospital two weeks later, and then we'll see that, that impact in death typically another two weeks after that. So it's something to compare upon. I think people are kind of fascinated that wastewater treatment can be used as a, as a testing measure. And so, you know, we're, we're keeping an eye on it, but it's, it's certainly not the be all end all of, of how we're monitoring for cases.
Councilmember Whelan, then Hayford O'Leary?
Just want to say thank you to all of the different staff involved in the mask and test kit distribution, and who will be as that continues. I know there is a very significant amount of, of decisions and effort and mitigations and all of that that goes into our internal work and then our programs with the community, but just really appreciate that in, in this time, we're also finding ways to, to add, add proactive support to, to community members as well, in addition to just figuring out how to keep going as a city. So I, I really appreciate that, and know that that takes extra effort, but think that's really essential in, in this surge.
Absolutely. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Yeah, my question was just more specific about the mask reuse guidelines. If there's anything like sort of official for that, it would, it would be great if you could share it with us or, or put it out on city channels, not just for the, the masks that we'll be providing, but also just in general, people have respirators, and I've heard questions about that. And the best I can do is be like, well, there's blogs about it, because so much of it seemed to predicated on the idea they are single-use and everything is kind of, in reality, people are reusing them. So if there are specific guidelines on care, I hope we can distribute those widely, care and responsible reuse for a limited number of times.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, there is a, a graphic that will be distributed with those masks to help people understand, and I believe it'll be in English and Spanish, to kind of show them the process of, you know, when you wear it for a day, what to do when you get home, when to pull it out of the paper bag or pull it off of the laundry line to be able to use it again. And so it was, that was very intentional to help people understand how long they can be used and how to use them. And I also want to mention too, this is, this is the biggest national effort in terms of release from the Strategic National Stockpile of resources ever in the US. So to give them, to, to give out this number of masks, this is something that we've never done as a country. So it'll be interesting to see how this rolls out.
Thank you. And I'll just say again, thank you to you, Jennifer, to our chief, to our city manager, to everyone leading the response for the city of Richfield. I know it's been super complicated and quickly evolving and just completely overwhelming. So thank you for your leadership and your efforts. I hope someday soon we can, you know, not have to have you come back continuously and us saying this because you guys need a break, but we really acknowledge your leadership and, and thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
City Manager Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a brief update on some of our mitigations. They continue. We're not hosting public meetings in our buildings. We are virtual with all of our meetings. We are moving our programming outdoors where we can, especially at Woodlake Nature Center. Senior programming is paused at the community center. There, you know, there's masks required in all of our buildings. So all of those mitigations continue. I also wanted to give you a brief update. We had surveyed all of our staff and asked for vaccination status, and we were doing that in preparation for the federal mask, I'm sorry, the federal vaccination or test program. And that, we've got good news on that. We've got really good compliance with this. It is mandatory. We're going to continue it to make that mandatory. And so of the people that are working in our buildings, we have about three hundred and two, and we only have a handful of about twenty people that we have to still collect the vaccination information. And of those folks, eighty-seven percent of our staff are vaccinated, so that is very good news. We are going to roll out a program that's been modified now that the federal program is no longer being enforced, and it will still be mandatory, and we are requiring vaccines for any new employees. And we're also looking to implement programs to continue to incentivize folks to get vaccinated, our staff to get vaccinated. And so still crafting the details on those programs. And then we will also move to requiring, or not requiring, but to encourage boosters as well and asking folks to fill out the survey for that information. So I don't know if there's any questions on the mitigations.
Thank you, city manager. Any questions from council? Councilmember Whelan?
If you don't have an update yet, that's okay. I know we had talked at one point. Are there mitigations in place at the ice arena, or what do those look like?
Yes, and I did, I did talk to Chris Wybe about that. So masks are required. They are not required for the skaters. So when folks are on the ice, they are, they don't have to wear a mask. It is, it is tough to enforce. So our staff are doing their best. They do remind folks to put masks on, and they, you know, if people don't, we're not letting that escalate. But yes, it is, we've got signs up all, all over.
Other comments or questions from council? Okay, thank you to our staff and to city manager Rodriguez for the update. The next item is claims and payroll.
Councilmember Whelan, I'll move claims and payroll.
Hayford O'Leary, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Whelan and seconded by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary to move claims and payroll. Any comments or questions? Okay, city clerk Sinning, if you could please take the roll call.
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Whelan?
Aye.
Thank you. We have four ayes, and claims and payroll has been approved. Next, the last item is hats off to hometown hits. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Yeah, I just wanted to again thank the boarding commission folks who applied and who interviewed for us. It was especially several of the more competitive ones, a situation where we had like, you know, ten great candidates and, and three seats, and that was tough for us, but really good news for the city because it means we got to pick from some awesome candidates. It's just great to see people showing up, committed to the work of the city, and coming with experience and ideas. And I'm just really excited to see what those folks are going to bring us in the, in the years to come.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan.
Two items, say one, just a, a huge ongoing thank you to all of our snowplow drivers and public works. I know this last week, we've had a lot of, a lot of small snows, which is just different in being challenging than one big snow, but appreciate the work that they continue to do this winter. And then second, wanted to lift up, in our work session today, we got to talk with our communications staff about the new Richfield recap, which is going to be a weekly email newsletter about what's happening in the city. And so would encourage anyone who is not already subscribed to get updates from the city, you can do that at richfieldmn.gov/subscribe, and that's another great way to get, hear about different events coming up, get up to speed on what different departments are working on. And so I'm really excited to have that new communications tool. Greatly appreciate Kate and Neil for their work on it, and look forward to, to that continuing going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. Councilmember Supple?
Thank you. I want to point out that the Section Eight waiting list is open right now, and you can get to that by going to the city website, to the community development tab, and then go to Section Eight, and they are taking applications on the waiting list until four PM on January twenty eighth. So this is, it doesn't open up very often, so it's really important that people apply if they are interested in that. As was mentioned earlier by staff, we're going to have an opening on the HRA, and I want to thank HRA Commissioner Sue Sandall. She's a former council member that's served for years on the HRA and has a lot of expertise, and her term is coming to an end, and she has decided she's not going to ask to be reappointed. So her final meeting will be in February, but she has served the community for many, many years, and I want to extend our thanks and appreciation to Commissioner Sandall. And then finally, this is Educational Support Professional Week, and I want to do a big shout out to all the paraprofessionals that are a great part of the team in our schools and do such important work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Supple. And in addition to what everybody has shared, I'll just thank our city staff and our FOWL board members who attended our, the Senate Bonding Committee tour stopped at Richfield Woodlake Nature Center to check out the Woodlake Nature Center to learn more about our needs in terms of updating the facility. A lot of them were representatives from greater Minnesota, different parts of Minnesota, and I think they were very surprised to see what we had in Woodlake Nature Center and what a beautiful, huge piece of nature that we have right in the urban core. And I just think there's no better way to ask for support and partnership to secure the future of our community than to have people come and see it with their own two eyes. And I think the tour was successful, and that's in huge part to the awesome leadership of our staff, especially our Recreation Director Amy Markle, who, you know, has been working at the nature center for so many years and just does such a great job of sharing the story of, of the nature center and the impact it has. So thank you to the bonding, the Senate Bonding Committee. We had both the House and the Senate Bonding Committees come, and that's, that's pretty close to a miracle. So very thankful to our senators as well, Melissa Wickland and Batista Torres-Roy for their work and lobbying to get that tour to stop in Richfield. So wish us all luck. We hope that we do get some state bonding money to support and secure the future of our Woodlake Nature Center. But that is all we have for tonight. We have no other items. I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone, and have a great night.